Wedding.
Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 I try to tell them they get a grand one.
Four.
Jerry, you have one or three on?
All right, unbelievable.
John.
Sure.
You let me know when you're ready, Marvin, and. We will know whenever we can.
I said it was short term, so you watch where you're very appreciated. Straighten up.
It's.
Very intense. That's interesting. It's definitely other.
Ronnie, is that? Putting on two.
What's that?
They was adding first page from YouTube. You're showing me.
Yeah, it's today.
Okay, it's coming through on my YouTube size. But if you're seeing it, and it sounds like you're hearing me all about such a thing, it's delightful. It's sharing YouTube.
It's okay. Yes. Made in white.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. I've got something. So. I'm here too. It's. So. Let's go.
There we go. All right, we'll call the meeting door, think of a special meeting. Uh, you will, you know. Ladies and gentlemen. Right, Nate, there was.
I just have a father. Thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. Therefore, we take this opportunity to be here today, make these very important decisions for the county. Therefore, we just pray that the decisions we make here be the best for most people in the county, and the decisions we make would be pleasing unto you. Therefore, we ask that you layer a hand, follow our law enforcement officers, and they'll keep them safe. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. Lead the city of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on a nation of equality and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to start out, reminder, Bible says, just an informational meeting. There's tense, there'll be no motions, no votes. Nothing will be settled today, obviously, there's questions and answers, and we'll try to get through what we have on our minds, if you're confused on something, or quoting the numbers a little bit, but again, no votes, no motions, nothing will be settled today. And thereon, I would open the floor to whoever would like to start questioning. For the, the tier systems, the way I'm saying the numbers, we've got the money to do it, it's a one, five, ten, fifteen, twenty year pitch system, has nothing, nothing to do if we decide to give raises in the budget, it's nothing to do with that, so.
For me, having not been here when it was originally thought out or brought up, can you give me just a couple minutes of where it came from, why we're looking at it?
All right.
And what it's about?
What Nate's gonna bring it along over here.
Uh. I don't know, it's been so long now, I don't remember what year it was, they move by very fast anymore. Uh. But we developed a salary wage committee to look at their compensation for the county employees, along with the, the elected officials. And we took it directly from the AIC's salary book that they send out every year, lists all the counties by population, what everybody is paid in that in the state. So at that point in time, there was ten count, there were ten counties our size by population. And we looked at those and, uh, everybody in, every county employee, every county employee, except for the county council and the county commissioners, were at the bottom of that ten county pay scale. So we wanted form this salary wage committee to look at what it would take to bring everybody up to the average of the ten counties. And then look how we could go forward to keep, help retain employees and have some type of pay scale going forward. Uh. The way it was at that time, and it still is right now, uh, if somebody hires in as a second deputy, they get paid the same thing as somebody who's been here for fifteen years, and is a second deputy. They, they start at the same money that a fifteen year employee is making. So we looked at something to change that. And I guess, I'm saying, I'm not sure, but I think it was like two thousand nineteen. This, the policy that we came up with, uh, well, there was five of us on that committee. Uh, Brent was on it, Kelly was on it, I was on it. Uh, Matt Baker, the owner at that time, he was on it, and Mike Cassler, the sheriff at that time, he was on that committee. We put this together and the council did not adopt that policy or program at that time. That year, we brought, or the council brought everybody to the average of the ten counties, what the salaries were, they brought everybody, elected officials and everybody to that average. And then nothing was ever done with it since then. So since our last salary wage committee meeting, I went back and done some refreshment on this, the whole topic, and we looked at what it was. And I know Heather doesn't know it, she wasn't here at that time, but we could go back and look. But we didn't start this at that time, so nobody got any tier adjustment of any kind. So I know whenever we've been looking at this time, Kelly was under the impression that five years ago, everybody got that five year rate at the tier that was been here five years, but nobody did because the council at that time did not adopt the policy. So we would actually be, or you all would actually be starting at zero again now, with a complete implementation of, of the policy. The very first year is gonna cost the council quite a bit of money. But from then on, all the employees' milestone years will be a significant increase. And there may be, but there may be years, up to four years, to where there would be no increase, but this, uh, cost of living increase. And that's what this is based on, that outside of milestones was then, every other year would just be whatever the cost of living increase would be. I don't know if that gives you, answers any of your questions, or gives you any background on.
The cost of living or longevity?
Cost of living.
Uh huh.
This original plan did away with longevity, okay. And then whenever we look at this again, our last meeting, we looked at this and we didn't have anything for, actually, we never took the plan past fifteen years. So whenever we want to extend it on now to a twenty year plan, or twenty years, there was be no, no milestone from then on. So at that point in time, the employee would pick up the maximum of their longevity, which would be, they would get another extra thousand dollars a year, because they don't have another step to go to.
Do you remember uh, that year? How much the county spent to bring everybody up to the average?
I don't.
But you think it was two thousand nineteen?
I think it was two thousand.
It's been six years.
And whenever you go back and look, and I don't remember if it's in this or if it's some of the other paperwork I had, if you go back and look at that year, what actually would have been the twenty twenty, in the twenty twenty budget, if I, my thinking's right. Uh. You can look at the increases that were given there that it's obvious that nobody got the the tier increases because everything was all over the, all over the map to get everybody up to the, to the average.
Yeah, you mean you didn't do the tiers?
They didn't do the tiers, they just took everybody up to the average and which is a good thing. But going forward, it doesn't, they didn't leave anything to move forward with, you know, it didn't say like, so the next year, they were gonna, they were gonna go ahead and adopt the tier program, system. And, uh, it just nothing ever happened, so it would be it'll be a big a big number to get started. Because you would be looking at everybody's tier level. I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a big difference for everybody that was less than five years, but say people that have fifteen years, they would be looking at a five thousand dollar increase next year, plus the cost of living, whatever that is.
And longevity, I mean.
Now, this whole plan was to take and eliminate the longevity. Except for those over the twenty years, because that was everybody over twenty years. But everybody over the, over the twenty years, how they would be, they would get a seventy five hundred dollar increase.
Right.
Plus the cost of living.
Well.
And a thousand.
Thirty two hundred for second deputies and other employees.
Right. I'm so in the department, it's for.
That is right. Okay, yeah, so this schedule right here, this is the, uh, five, ten, fifteen, this is the schedule, yes. So there's, so we've got, uh, first deputy, in their fifth year, we would raise their salary about fifteen hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars going forward.
Plus the costing.
Plus the cost of living.
Yes.
Raise going forward.
Going forward.
And second, when we get to the ten year, we would raise their salary three thousand dollars.
Another fifteen hundred. It's goes to, it's a cumulative.
Oh, I see, she wrote cumulative, yes. An eight hundred right there. Okay, another fifteen, that would be another fifteen hundred. And then it looks like fifteen years is a two thousand dollar raise.
Yes.
And twenty years is a twenty five hundred dollars. So if you've been here twenty years, you're making seventy five, and no cost of living, take that. Put it aside, you're making seventy five hundred dollars a year, more than you did when you started.
Yes. Well, more than anybody that would hire in today.
That's right, more than when you started.
Yeah.
So if you're, if you're a, uh, a first deputy, and you've been in that office twenty years, and you retire, and they replace you, they're gonna make seventy five hundred dollars less than that first deputy.
Just based on this?
Yes.
Yeah, because you'll have a, you'll have a base wage.
Yeah, right.
Which is the average of the, and now there's all eight counties our size, so, or nine counties, uh, but it'd be on the, the average based on that would be your base salary for whatever position it is.
Do the other counties do this tiered thing?
I don't know what they do.
I have no clue. Now, if every, if all ten counties did exactly the same, then the average wage is gonna rise just like the tenure. I think if everybody's doing the same thing, you know, they're you probably won't say in there. If we all have the same person start on the same day, they all worked there for twenty years, and everybody got this cumulative pay raise, then when they went to average me back, they're all the same.
Yeah, but it would be that way. You're gonna have to turn over.
Yeah.
Forever, and then, I mean.
The department had a first deputy that's been here twenty years, because they can't hold office that much, and.
They can hold the office as long as they want to, they're appointed. First deputy, first deputies are appointed.
With the department, it's, our department heads are appointed. It's not by elected officials? Oh, no, okay.
Not elected officials.
Okay. So elected divisions aren't actually included in any of this? So I was thinking the department had to be the elected officials.
An elected official is, is essentially a department head.
Well, then who, I, I'm confused.
Ted Barker, man, he's superintendent, he's a department head, but he's not elected official.
Okay.
Roger Hamilton, the highway superintendent, he's a department head, but he's not elected official. Uh, Roger Nichols, at the magistrate's office, he is a department head, he's not elected official. Sherry Lewis, the health department, she's a department head, elected official.
Okay, so there's a small.
They are.
My subset.
Well, my opinion, no agent, he's a department head, not elected official. They're not, he might be here twenty years.
Yeah.
He probably has to be appointed. Or real close.
Yeah.
There are going to be a lot of department heads that are here twenty years.
Yeah.
And first deputies that could easily be here twenty years, if they're good at their job.
Yeah.
Just because the office holder changes, that doesn't mean they're gonna get rid of that first deputy. I've seen that happen many, many times, they go ahead and keep that first deputy, especially a new office holder that's never been in that office before. They're gonna keep that first deputy for the experience that they bring to the job. Which I think is one hundred percent appropriate. I don't mind anybody from doing that. We want the best people for the job.
And that's one reason we go on here to put this in effect, is to keep our good work.
Yes.
Anybody who can tell me why it was not passed? Why it was not accepted? I really don't remember, five, six years ago.
There was.
Like we had a big budget cut.
We didn't have a big budget cut, we had to be a budget cut.
Well, we had to make a budget cut, that's what I mean. Then we have to do that down with the county with it.
In all reality, the county budget is not, I've been a commissioner for, this is my twelfth year, I have never seen the county budget count.
Well, I mean, what's proposed and what we had to.
That's a wish list.
Okay.
I mean, that's just like your, that's just like your twelve year old kid getting his Christmas list ready for Santa Claus. You know, Santa Claus is not gonna bring you everything on that list, that's the same way all these proposed budgets are, it's just a proposed budget, this is what I really like to ask.
You know, we don't know why we didn't do it five years ago. So we don't get out, you know.
There were personalities involved.
Yeah, a lot of personalities.
Well, that's the reason that we didn't enact it, was there the personalities involved?
Okay.
So there, I mean, I don't wanna stand up here and point fingers and.
No, I wonder if there was a fiscal reason.
There was not a fiscal reason.
Yeah.
There were, to my knowledge, there was no fiscal reason.
Were we losing anybody because they did not get that through?
I don't know. See, I, I don't, I don't know, because I never, I mean, that's.
I know a lot of people.
Very, very, very rarely, whenever somebody quits, I know the exact reason why they quit.
Mm hmm.
I mean, you know, that's, people just don't like to tell that, and now with our HR department, that all was through HR, and I should not be privileged.
Exactly. We gave some pretty extensive raises last year, some pretty, pretty good ones.
I agree.
Do we know where we stand currently against the average in the, in the, uh, AIC, uh, county vote?
You just say.
He has it.
Would we look at those that are below the average, bringing them up before we started this? Will we look at those above the average, making some sort of justification against it?
Uh.
It's a lot of math, but.
If, uh, you would like to, uh, name a position, I can tell you real quick, but, I mean, I don't have everything listed in order, I have to go, different sections to get, so, uh.
Let's, let's take our first deputy, just pick a department. I don't care. One has been here quite a while, who's first deputy that's been, how long's your first deputy been here? Nine years, from going to the assessors department. Please. Nine years would have been part of the bringing them up to average. Five years ago, six years, unofficial moves. What will be used? All of the assessors. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the others. And Don sits here, do you label that as the chief deputy assessor, and only her salary is in your general fund budget, is there any reassessment that goes toward her? Is her salary, okay, so now we're looking at a budget book? Thirty three thousand five hundred and twenty one dollars. That's for this year.
The first deputy assessor in Green County, there are nine counties of our population. There are one, two, three, she's fourth out of nine counties.
So probably about average back, it's pretty.
So probably about average, you're back, it's pretty close to average. The uh, the R D R, it's all the same page with chief deputy. He started.
Started off. Uh, what was, what was attempted five years ago and. Getting the averages up, it looks like it's worked, it's under there?
Yes, I would say.
Okay.
And the treasurer, there are, the treasurer's motion that leaves. She's four. Just barely. Okay. Just barely filled. Well, the second deputies.
No, I think that gave me a pretty good idea, I mean, I, I.
Can't imagine. The counties our size being too far apart.
I guess my question was. By resetting it five years ago and now having not done that for some time. How far behind do we think we were to the average of the other counties? Because that was why we're right in.
Right, whatever we did, when we had to reset. We were last in average category, except for the commissioners and the council. The council was the highest paid council of the, at that time was ten counties. The, the council was the highest paid in the ten counties and the commissioner was seven.
Please, when we, are you on the page there, you're going to something for me? Just, I, I, we're in the last treasure right there. Top of the bottom, top salary, bottom salary.
Uh, okay, the treasury, for the first deputy, I'll probably, yeah, my first deputy treasurer. The lowest is uh thirty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, that's Jefferson County. Uh, the highest. Is. Whitelands County. Uh, forty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
So I remember there's a little over ten grand difference there. I remember when I, I was first coming up, I went back and looked at that book. And I, I remember when we talk about Green County's council being the highest paid. But it wasn't like that, there was no ten thousand dollar difference between counts, there was about a couple thousand bucks. The council and the commissioners both are some of the lowest salaries in the county. But it was, it was, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thousand dollar, fifteen hundred dollars difference between top and bottom, that's been a thousand.
We want to say average or?
But the question I guess would be, do we have to reset again? Or do we just take where we are now and go forward? I mean, I think Kelly's just, I don't know, we go forward, and so I think that's probably the first decision we have to make is.
I think positions is way behind.
I, I don't. I don't think, I mean. These aren't listed on the same page, I have to go to a different graduate board. So he does, just to pick out ones, something if you wanna look at and let me know on all of my page.
In the meantime, George, did you have? I don't even. Just wanna add to that. First, thanks for giving us a lot of serious thoughtful consideration. I know we've always, you gotta start somewhere. Been there, we're just for a county our size, a good place to start. But if you remember, we had to do a reset on EMS last year because. In the same way the police officers were not competing with the counties our size in the first fish market business. So I'd like to just let you hear what I've got to say, consider it been part of your process. My competition hasn't sold in county. Arnox County. My competition is ISP, DNR. Merrill County Sheriff's Department, some company deep. You can start it out as a state trooper, make a seventy thousand dollars a year. That's your first year, from there you get incremental raises. A five or six-year trooper is probably gonna be making in the ballpark of eighty, I'm just guessing, but it's well above the seven, there may be more than that. They will gladly, they are thirty of my guys all the time. Okay, as you all know, um, they brought it up, I, I know we got a big raise last year. We needed sixty thousand and some odd dollars per year, I forget, for the merit deputy. Okay, then that's a good way to bring in county, I don't want to argue that at all, it's, it's, it's a good way to share. But if we wanna retain people and put spending twenty and thirty and whatever thousand dollars a year to hire a new deputy and buy all this gear and spend all that. Two years training him so he knows the job. I don't think we can get tied into some of this on counties based our size, just especially in the EMS and police business. It's a whole different ballgame and a whole different arena. And I just wanted to say that, uh. We've got a lot of good people work for the sheriff's department. Saw good people on EMS, a lot of good people in county employees across the board. Right, do you think we need to break out of that box a little bit, our county is our size and, and think about retention? This certainly needs to be an average, but there's a big disparity from office to office two. You know, just, you know. Want you to think about that when you're making this decision. I've been trying for months to fill these positions. I've finally found a young guy, first decent applicant, I've had him months and months, that we're gonna get hired. You know, we still got an open position and. You know, my competition again, go back to, is not solving down here in Knox County or any of these other agencies, mine's to see to here. The C Indiana State Police, we got thirty of my guys in the academy. You know, uh. That's what I'm competing against, citizen law for, I know, those have the same problems with all these other. Uh, ambulance departments, people personnel that was addressed last year. I think this will go along, I, with more morale, very few of our guys would fall into the twenty-year group. We've got a couple. You know, it's hard to get a twenty-year guy, you know. Those are the people that really know. The job and do it well, and they're the guys that are gonna take over leadership one day, they're the guys who are training them into new guys. They're invaluable to me, especially when you want to come to us and to have those ten, fifteen, twenty-year docs and. You know, we're losing them at two, three, four years, that's. It's not good for the citizens, if they don't get the best people that they could get, they don't get bad people. You know, people with more experience have better ways of doing things and get things done more efficiently and all these different things, have more answers, um. I just think it's. Really a good move for some of us, some of it will be funded by us, because some of our. We moved in some things like we did last year, many people that buy this that are not general fund money. You know, we're taking some of ours out of PSD and county corrections, uh, but we're still, there's, there's still a hit to. To the general fund, we tried to win, and that's the best we can. And uh. Go back to what Nathan said, it's gonna be a different number every year, but. I think it's a. It was good that we, what we did back in for the twenty-twenty budget, without people, I think our deputy's got about a five thousand dollar rate, but we, again, we were late, we were so far behind. The county's gone so far in the last five or six years, getting us. Closer to, to that average, and I would hate to see that fall apart now, uh. In our year, and I'm sure other office holders be. You know, from the year, the people with seniority, you know, I'm trained in this personally, clearly I would make the same money I am. You know, good morale. It's hard, it, it is difficult, it is difficult, yeah, so uh. I just, again, thank you for your. Consideration on this, I know it's gonna be thoughtful and the fact that you're meeting here like this, you're taking it serious, and we appreciate it.
I just. Went down and just, I just happened to come to this page, uh. This uh. This is the highway department. Uh, our road bosses. There's, Gibson County does not have that job description as a road boss. Uh. But uh, the uh. Other eight counties. Our road bosses are last.
Uh, which one of the lineups I'm looking at here at the highway department, which one is a road boss? District forum?
District forum, yes.
So we've got a number there, we have two of them?
We have three.
Three, so I divide that number by three, that's what our district forum salary is.
Yes.
As I said, it's a hundred and fifty-eight, five twenty-three.
Yeah, that's right.
Fifty-two, eight forty-one. What is the highest one on the list?
Uh, the highest one? Sixty-nine, two, sixty-nine, two seventy-eight.
You said we are the lowest. That's a thirty percent pay high to get into that.
Well, that's the highest, yeah. That's the highest.
Who's the highest?
Jasper County. Jasper County and uh. Whitelands County.
I don't know how many of those counties to have.
Then Clinton County, then. Oh, they don't, I wouldn't say they would. I don't know, no, those counties have a whole reason to do, I can guarantee you that. Then our labors.
Mm-hmm.
They're about the average. Okay, just within a few dollars of the average. But say our, our road bosses are lacking sign, and that's. So I'm not saying this, I don't wanna say this in this, I don't want anybody to think I'm saying this in a bad way. It's because we've been, the county's always done it this way, always loop everybody, want everybody together. And they don't. Look at the actual position.
So what you're suggesting, which I agree. Some of these positions are so far behind, they need to be. Roll it to.
At least, yeah, and, and the, the highway department's its own handle. Because they fund their own way for their own salaries.
Right.
So it's, that's a completely different. Handle, and that's one thing, that's where we really need to get broader. And because. I know everybody's gonna think that this is probably terrible, but I don't study those numbers, that's what I got a highway superintendent for.
Uh, well, right now with this, what we're heading on doing here, looking at twenty-eight, seven is what he's gonna have to come up with. If this we go through and add zero, it's probably.
Twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars?
Well, okay, so wait a minute. Wait, we need to decide, I, to me, we need to decide what we're talking about, because what was proposed, what Kelly gave us was just two other than other tiers. So to me, the first decision we have to make is, are we just gonna implement the tiers on the salaries that people have now? Are we gonna go back and redo the research that the Wage Commission did in two thousand nineteen and set everybody's average and. Bring them up to that and then implement the tiers, I mean.
I.
There's several different decisions that we're gonna have to make.
I think if you do that, you're gonna chase this forever. And you, we can tell right here that we're good for, outside of a few different. Positions, I'll have to, I'd have to go through here and look them all, because I haven't studied this like I normally do, uh. And look at. Who is way on, I mean, and who's not. But like, I mean, first deputies that we've looked at here so far, I mean, they're pretty much average.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Your road bosses were.
My road bosses are way down, but I believe, but my labors are pretty much average, you know, so it's.
Yeah, the road bosses were fifty-three. And change.
Yeah, there, there's, there's seven, that'll be eight counties that have road bosses, have road bosses. Uh, I'm just trying to look here. Other professionals.
Well, one of the questions I have in Marvin and Tanner, all the people that have been here and done this.
We are already at this position right here. This is the submitted budget, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we're already here. To make a change, it's gonna fall on seven of us. We're the ones that can go in here and make the change. We keep saying this back to a department head and say, you need to go in there and fix all the salaries up, so that we know where the starting point will be.
I think, I, I was given the understanding that Kelly talked all of the department heads and told them to put this in their budget.
I know Sarah and I put it in our budget.
What, what did you put in there, Don?
He put the tiers, yeah.
You know, all their salaries based on the tiers?
And then whatever base. Percentage.
We do this well, right? We do.
So I think that's in here, I think what's in here in the proposed budget includes this.
Exactly.
It includes what Kelly said, it doesn't include that, sorry.
It doesn't include bringing them all up to average, it just includes the tier structure. I mean, highway superintendent. Is. Nine out of nine. Uh. No, he's eight out of nine. He's a fifty-six, fourteen. The highest. Is Jasper County. That's seventy-nine, eight ninety-four.
The superintendent doesn't draw any other. Salary from any other part of the budget except for this highway administration?
Yeah.
And fifty-six, fourteen. Well, if we're gonna put in the longevity stuff, he's proposing a sixty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollar salary. Using this. So why?
Yeah. And he'll still be ten thousand dollars less than the highest of the nine counties.
What is the lowest?
Fifty-one, seven oh four. Less than five thousand dollars.
That's a twenty-two percent increase.
And. Just to kinda. Blow his horn. Two years ago, Roger Hamilton was named county highway superintendent of the year in the state of Indiana. So he's not a slouch. He does more than the minimum. He will have his master road builder certificate. Before the end of the year. There are four other highway superintendents out of ninety-two. In the state that have a master road builder certificate.
Well, looking something right quick for. Formulate my next question.
I guess the, the, the point I'll try to make is we've got some very, very talented people. That without a doubt would have other options. But they feel pretty strongly about their community, but. The strong feeling about the community doesn't keep your likes on.
Well, and we're hiring younger and younger.
Yes.
So they're gonna get that twenty-year quicker. And if they're up to where they are happy with their salaries. Then more likely they're not gonna drop and go somewhere else.
Yeah, they're gonna be, they're, they're gonna be thirty and forty-year employees. They're going to be, they're, they're going to be thirty and forty year employees and not just twenty year employees.
That's what I like with the tier system.
I agree.
And I like the fact too, I don't think that their employee should be. Made the same as one with five years, you know, it just.
Well, you and I run our own businesses. We know what it's like to try and keep employees.
Yeah.
And.
Try to take your employment and it's hard one every. Same wage, that was new that way.
Your tenure guy being off.
Being off.
And already?
Yeah. But I don't disagree with that even starting over.
I think we're too close.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there's going to be some.
That we're pretty far off on. I mean.
Where we can work on those.
Yeah.
And it was interesting where those are.
Those are. I guess you could say those are people you're hiring off the street just to fill a job.
Mm-hmm.
You know, those are department heads. Those are especially. Positions, basically. Uh. I did look at EMS to see what it was.
I think too, at this point, we are so close that. It would be viable for just the office holder to make that argument towards road boss or the shell. Sure. I agree, in the next budgetary process, I think that would be appropriate. We all have. Can get access to those numbers and come before you go make that argument. Go for the most part, I think. You know, they're on a day or for a jail or pay as much, but we want to retain that. Experience level and. We know the people who put them about in ten, fifteen, twenty years, leaving knowledge and effect. Because all of the people all of it are probably going to put, you know, both the roles or. Something like that, you know, moving out. And meeting them up, I'm typically giving them more responsibility. They may have the same job I was there officer, but doesn't mean they have the same job.
And it's. To kind of back up, and this is, this is probably a little bit different than the sheriff's department. There is a lot of the other. Departments in the county, but. Whenever the sheriff has to advertise for help, he can say his starting wage is this. With increase at five, ten, fifteen years, you know, and that's.
Something.
Well, and not only that, that's a draw for people.
Yeah, that, that means a lot to the employee. I mean, there's, this has been a topic of conversation for years. And our guys were excited when they knew that we were putting it in the proposed budget. We told them there's no guarantees. We're going to ask for it. But, uh. It did create some excitement with the guys that have been there, you know, we do have some ten, fifteen, twelve, fifteen year guys. We've got some twenty year people. I've got twenty, this factor with over twenty years. Uh. I've got several that are sneaking up on the five and ten year area. And it is exciting to, to them to be recognized and, and they do do a lot of the training again. They don't necessarily have that designation. That Morris heed upon them to keep the. Keep the place running. Basically, they're attracting living people. They're not attracting employees. You know, they're looking at it's, okay, I am going to move up in that job.
Yes.
You know, instead of hiring him, you know, I'm sure we've all been there, aren't I? What does this job now offer me? I'm here definitely in your depth.
A little bit, you're trying to see something.
A little bit of recognition goes along. Uh, we've all been. I own my own business too in the past and. You see it, you know, so different in the free market. You could reward individually. Based on your project in the business and all that. County development is totally different. That's one thing we've never really had a tool to. Necessarily recognize people.
They're punish your people who stays with you. I need someone who are just trying to leave.
But for the benefit of the whole county, there's a whole, all the departments that we do. It's not just about the sheriff's department, you know, and I think we're all in this. You know, the Green County government works really well. I think we all want the same thing and it works best for everybody that lives in our county. And I, I think this will. This will help our employee, you know, technical employees here that.
You didn't know.
That many here do, the state police, well, I'm saying though, they weren't offering. Any money, so they want to get him. And more people were going to the private departments.
Yeah.
Then you see more than that in the state, all of a sudden they went crazy, I guess. Yeah, well, the money we do, but. You know, we're looking, we're a little bit of a blow up in twenty forty-seven, so we ask you to move more from our people. You know, we're working holidays and weekends and after hours and long days sometimes and. Yeah, we start off with nothing planning, but. So just a little bit extra for those people that give a lot.
So, so Grant. Can I make a recommendation?
Okay.
Can I make a recommendation? Because this was an information session earlier. But I think we do need to clear all the books, the decisions that the council needs to make at the budget hearings so that we have a plan. And we'll get to budgeting when we start talking about races. Would everybody agree with that?
This will have to be discussed at the budget hearing, so.
So I mean, to me, to me, the first thing we would need to go and reference, say, yes or no, we're going to do a reset. Yes or no, we're going to do the tiers. No, I know. I'm just saying that I would like to have it on that that's the decisions we have to make. At the budget hearings, when we decide to make, when you do make the decisions.
Yeah. We agree that in the meetings or in amendments.
Identifying specific questions to be addressed at the budget hearings is not a problem today. Uh, that doesn't require. A vote, as far as I'm concerned, that's just. If somebody says I'd like. These questions to be. Uh, addressed with the budget here.
I just like things to be in black and white if I just kind of like.
Yeah, they're not going to have to be discussed at the budget hearing. I think we're all.
I just, I just want. Everybody to. Keep in mind when you're looking at this stuff. That. None of the five year or the ten year, the fifteen year or, and none of that has ever been paid out. So you would have to look at every five year employee. Every, everybody has been there ten years. They would be looking at.